So I would like to call to order our special meeting on April, I don't even know what day today is.
Yeah.
April fifth, April fifth, twenty twenty two. So we, this is a special meeting and not a regular meeting, so we have an abbreviated agenda. Let me open that up, so I'm looking at the same exact document everybody else's. But again, that's why it's it's shorter is because it's a special meeting and not a full regular meeting. So therefore, we're gonna skip right into the Ed specs introduction for the school building committee. There's a time for president to speak at the end of the meeting only today. Okay, Phil?
All right, let me share my screen here. And I will. I'll share this with all of you once I go through it. And I think what I'll do is I'll let if you allow me to present a page as we go and then and and you can ask questions. Once the the page is over, because there's gonna be some dialogue here. So this is basically meeting one of of your Ed spec discussion here. And so the idea behind this, really, the purpose of the ads specs is is to, you know, for the board to articulate the educational philosophy and the programs, the goals, and then translate them into some sort of facility design guidelines. And so what happens is you create your Ed specs and then you give them over to an architect and they make it come to life through the building design. And they have to meet the things, the programs, you know, your philosophical pieces that you want. They have to meet those within your, you know, your building, okay? And really, it's you're creating the connection between the educational program and the actual physical facility. So that's really the purpose of the Ed spec. As you go through this, you you know, you're really trying to create an environment that to facilitate twenty first century learning. But I I think the important part of that is you're not building a school. And I say building the school could be renovation or new. You're not building it for the next ten years, you're you're probably building it for the next fifty. And so you want to think about that as as you create Ed specs. You want to think really long term and make sure the building meets our needs for a long period of time. As this document is created, it will describe the spatial requirements and and the facility needs and the facility needs are your needs, what you're gonna identify, and you use those to meet your educational goals. And I just, I think there's there's, it's important to note here that there is research out there that suggests that there is a relationship, there's a correlation between the conditions and design of a school and and actual the facility and the learning outcomes. And I see Brianna nodding her head and thinking about, she just had the opportunity through the SBC to tour Birch Grove School in Tallent the other day. And just walking in to that environment, and I say that environment, bright, new, everything crisp, just the tools needed to educate students, it really becomes apparent that some changes are needed for us. As we go through this process, I think it's really important for the board to realize there is no decision yet. This SBC School Building Committee isn't going in any direction yet, meaning it's not a new building on a new site and it's not a renovation. What they have ruled out, I will say, is that Center School is not a site that would be used. So if there's a renovation, it would be Hall School that would be renovated, okay? So that shouldn't matter, though, as you develop your Ed specs, because you're creating a brand new pre K three eighth grade building and you want your Ed specs to match the program that you want to develop. Does that make sense?
So you're saying that we're gonna develop the philosophy and what we need regardless of what form it takes down the road?
That is correct, and they'll use the Ed specs. And you know, whether it's a renovation or new, they're going to meet as many of those as they can. Now, sometimes, obviously, price comes into play here. When you you develop Ed specs, you put in everything that you want, would like to see in your school building. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen. So your thousand person theater, you know, with box office that you can put it in there, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen, you can put everything under the sun, but you have to align it to your board goals, your mission, what you're trying to do and your philosophy, okay? Any questions about just the overall purpose of this? Herb, you're muted. Herb, you're muted. I saw your mouth moving, so I'm assuming you wanted to ask a question.
Phil, what what role does the the state play in this, as I come in at this point or at a later date?
Good question. So basically, what happens is once you develop your Ed specs and they, Ed specs aren't finalized. So meaning like, we're gonna have at some point, I would say, I think, within the next month or six weeks, a meeting with this, the Office of School Construction, just a preliminary meeting to say, here's where we're at, they like to hear what what we're thinking, the SBC is thinking at this point. And they may ask for a preliminary set of Ed specs, and that's what we're working towards. It doesn't mean that it's finalized, number one, so you can modify them. But then they take the Ed spec, and I'll give you the Tallent example. When they did the Tallent project, one of the things that they looked at was there was a, what we'll call a microphone system within classrooms, and they denied it. Now, Tallent could have still put it into their building, but it would not have been reimbursable, it would have been entirely on them. That's where the Office of School Construction Grants Review, OSCGR, comes into play with Ed specs. So they may say, look, I love what you've done, but you have designed, you know, you want a playground that's, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. That's not happening, we're not doing that. And so basically, they, you work with them to try and prioritize what you want and how you can meet the needs of your school building and your Ed specs, but also because they're funding a good portion of the project. They obviously have say in that, of what they approve and don't approve. Make sense?
A question on process. Do we, do we do a tentative Ed specs, submit them, they provide feedback, we edit it, and then it goes to the architect? Like, is is this like a final approval? Did they, you know, if we decided later that we wanted to add a microphone type of thing, we have to get that signed off? Or is this just kind of a, to give us a feel early on without it being the final okay?
So it's not the final okay when you go give it to the first round, but when you send it out to an architect, you really want to have a good solid Ed spec that's been approved by the Board of Education. It still doesn't mean you can't change at that point. If you realize you get your design back and and you see something and you're like, oh, we totally missed this piece, which typically doesn't happen, there are smaller things that you miss that you you, they would allow you to make a change depending on the timing of it too. So the building's built, you walk in, you go, holy cow, we forgot to do this, it's a little late for that, right? But if it's in a in a point where they can do it and they they realize it makes sense to do it, obviously, that can happen, but they, the often they being the Office of School Construction Grants Review, they do this all the time, so they may say, hey, we see where you think you need an elevator, have you thought about doing just one level as opposed to adding a second level? And because you only have three thousand square feet upstairs, maybe just extend the footprint, you take out the cost of the elevator. Those are conversations that you can have, but you would put in your Ed spec, hey, we if we have a second floor, we want, obviously, have to have an elevator. And those are conversations that would go back and forth and location, things like that. Brianna, I saw your hand too.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify that if there are things that OSCGR will not fund, we can still do them, the cost just comes back to the town, although I assume there are some qualifications about that. Like if it's touching something they did or what have you, they probably still have some say. But it's not to say you can't do things, it's just a matter of different funding.
That's correct, and I will say, one of the issues that they are really tight on is space. So if you decide to build an additional big auditorium, they can, you know, you can get hit on your percentage of reimbursement. Another example is if you build the superintendent's office connected to the school and there's an overage, they only give you a certain percentage. So but if it's things like design features where the it doesn't change the footprint, we want to make, you know, I'm just trying to come up with an example here. You know, you you want to move an office around, you're not changing the the size of the footprint, but you're, you want some different things put in. You could, you know, that's not an issue. They'll work with you on those things, they just don't like you to go, hey, we wanted sixty thousand square feet today and this addition is gonna be eighty five. That's not what they're looking for. Okay?
You still have to convince the the town later on, if you have something extra in there that's not reimbursable.
That's correct. That's correct, and you can add it as a secondary thing if you wanted to. I think that's something that OSCGR allows. So if you were gonna go to referendum and said, hey, we're gonna promote propose a pre K three eighth grade building, and again, whether it's renovation or new, but we would also like, and there could be a second question, would you support this? And then that was what would you would, you know, share with OSCGR, so you could see that. But again, this is the purpose of this this document in the first meeting tonight is just to give you an overview and get you to start thinking, and I think Brianna and Anna are on the committee, but they just toured Tallent. I think what's interesting is that you get a real sense when you walk into a new building, you're like, wow, I like that, that's impressive, great space use there. I wouldn't do that, so you know, there's a lot of features you start considering when you walk into a building. And this is something that we consider, would consider for the board too, if the board of the head wanted to go see the new building at Tom Swanson Loves Tour show in this building, I'm sure the principal in Tallent, he would do it for the board if you wanted to see it. So. So again, the the putting everything together here, the idea is that you're deciding the defining the program and then we're building the facility to match the program, okay?
I just tried. In quick, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I heard, well, Herb was, you were talking about the townspeople and they are very important members of all of these decisions being made and things. So I wanted to let you know that the OPM, that's the owner project manager, Scott Pelman, who's working with the School Building Committee, is very interested in speaking with the the community. He has already told us that he wants to go out to different events or make himself available for families to come and give suggestions and ask questions, so I loved that he was so open and thinking about our community and their input, just as you are. So that's kind of already something I'm happy to see our project managers on top of, and hopefully that makes you feel good too.
Yeah, I think one of the things he's really cognizant of, and he doesn't want to put anything out there until we know some direction. Because you know, you think one thing, we really want to do this, and then you go see OSCGR, hint, hint, the roof project. They say, you know, all of a sudden, what you want to do, they say no. So you don't want to go public until you have just a general conversation, you know, and it's really a couple conversations with OSCGR, and they say, yeah, we're gonna support this project, we see what you're doing, you're on track, go this direction. It doesn't mean you have approval for it, it just means they're gonna support, and so that's when you start getting that community feedback. And they, again, this present to speak today, if they're, you know, we can put some things out as the Board of Ed, if they have feedback about Ed specs, share it, all of this information is gonna go through my, and a lot of it already has gone through the admin team, but I'm also taking this information out to schools, they haven't seen it yet because you need to see it first. Okay, and and this is a a pretty version of this, I'm gonna tell you. The actual document is is right now, it's about sixty five pages and it's meant for and it's 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 raw, it's not done, meaning I haven't completed it because you have to help do it. But it's, it shows all the programs in it and it just needs to fill in some of the blanks.
So one, one more thing about the PR and the public is we did put an article in the Wellington Wire, and we're gonna really try to stay up on that, make sure we give an update every edition, and then we'll have Facebook also going once we have some definitive things to share. I think we're also holding off to wait to see which direction the building committee chooses to go in, whether we, whether we renovate or whether we build a new building. I think it would just confuse the public if we put two proposals out there, so.
Correct. Hey, Michelle, just a a side note, I can't see participants, even though I have the the chime on. If you happen to see anybody pop in, can you just keep an eye on that for me, please?
Sure, I'll have my participants window open.
Thank you so much. So I tried to, if you look at Ed spec documents, I tried, they're they're long, some of them are are really wordy. I tried to simplify this for conversation into five sections, five areas, outdoor features, building features, school programs, the classroom features, and then spec specialty area features. And you'll see, this is what we're gonna do today. Again, it's not everything, it's just I want to get your your mind going and the things you have to think about and start to identify what is important to you. So the first section is outdoor features. And I put in pictures to try and really kind of spark your thoughts and give you a sense of what are we talking about here? So these are things that I've identified or the admin teams identified or the school facility, you know, the the school building committee has talked about. And so just to, it's not all of the outdoor features. And the idea is that I want to go through these and explain some of them and see if there's anything else outdoor feature wise that you think we should really have in the Ed specs. So number one, safe pedestrian and vehicle vehicular patterns. This is really important, because if you look at this, the picture in the bottom center, it's small, but the arrow that goes at the bottom is is the 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 bus, I think that's actually the parent, no, that's the bus route. And then the green arrows are the cars. If you can separate the two, it makes your safety significantly better. So it's something that I think is really important, you don't want students, I I just think of the before Center School had the upper parking lot, you had parents parking in that parking lot while buses are going, trying to load. You had parents walking through buses to go up to pick up their child, you don't want that, that creates significant safety concerns for students and staff, right, and parents. And so you want to have patterns that really are thought out well, no matter the layout of your building. So that's something as an outdoor feature that's really important. The other part of that is the separation of the two, right? So if, you know, wherever your pedestrian walkway is, if you have a loading time, you don't want kids walking out to, you know, an after school program right where the to the playground where the buses are loading, you want to try and separate those things. So that needs to be thought out into the Ed spec, and it's really specific when it's written in. The third thing is the parking for staff and overflow for visitors. You know, and I'm gonna, I don't use the word hate very lightly, or you know, very often. I hate parking across the street at Hall School. I think it's dangerous, you know how much time I've spent on it, you know, I start my day there most mornings at seven fifteen in the morning, and I stand on the edge of the curb because just trying to slow people down. We have speed signs, we have flashing lights, we have school zone signs, and it's still, it's still forty five miles an hour in there often, even though it's supposed to be a twenty five. You need parking that's in a safe location for staff, again, that's not near where those drop off. So if a staff member's coming in, they're not driving past buses, you know, there or they have to wait to go in. We learned when we went to Birch Grove, you know, they had set up this loop similar to what you're looking at here that they thought was gonna be enough in the first day. Tom Swanson said, I had cars out to the main road, they were down here double looped, it was a separate landing zone in the buses, but they were still out in the road. That's something we have to consider, we, it's something we consider now. So when we do the parent drop off and pickup at Hall and more particularly the the pickup, we obviously can't have cars going into Route thirty two. And we also can't have buses not able to get into load because there's cars there. So it's, this is important in your design, outdoor features, that you want to really be thoughtful and say, we need separation, okay? The the next thing there is is away from the parking and the drop off is outdoor spaces that support the integration of the environment and learning. And if you look at, it's really the second one too, the next one down too, garden boxes, a courtyard, they had courtyards at Birch Grove. The pictures to the right there, you've got, you know, an outdoor stage of sorts, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just trying to spark ideas to let you know. These are the second picture down here, these are actually like the concrete blocks that we have in the upper outdoor learning space at Center School, they're just painted and they're put together. Great use of space, right, outdoor learning space is real easy to do. Those are things you want to identify, if it's something you want, it's something you should identify in your Ed specs. A small, two smaller spaces, one larger space. You know, they, there was one that actually had a canopy that looked like, it kind of looked like a safari tent with seats in the middle, is out, you could go out in the rain and be under it, but it was an outdoor learning space. Same thing with the gardens here, they've got the garden in the lower pick and it, you just, again, it was just to give you a sense. Is that something that you want, would like to see in your design? Again, it doesn't mean OSCGR is gonna approve it, but it's something that you should you you should consider, if there's anything outside such as outdoor learning spaces or garden spaces, you would want to consider that. The other part of that, if if it's a new site or it's Hall School, you have the river right there, is there something that you could incorporate into the river at Hall School? If you do a renovation, I would suggest that. If it's a new site, are there land features there that you would want to utilize? Those are things that you consider, and if you put it in your Ed spec, they can try and build it in. The aesthetically pleasing mechanical equipment was something that came up at Birch Grove. Think about right now, Hall School, the back of the school, the generator is just out there for in plain view. Not a huge issue, however, if you do a brand new school and then you've got a generator sitting right on the side of the building, you're gonna want to put fencing around it, things like that, so those are things to consider. You're you're gonna want to consider, you know, how do we hide these things or place them in an area where it's not for everyone to see? It's also a security feature to that, to maintain those 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 things. I would suggest two playgrounds, they have two at the elementary school. You don't need an playground for the middle school students, meeting five, six, seven, eight, that age range, but you do need play space. So one playground, and I wrote accessible, would be pre K and one would be elementary. And I'd say, you, you want to try and get it, stretch it to fourth grade, fifth grade, maybe. And then you put fencing around both, the one at Birch Grove, which I really appreciated, was the the pre K one was right off of the pre K room, had its own fenced in area, it was very well done, I would suggest doing the same thing. Then the secondary playground was a different location, so kids are tempted to go on things they shouldn't be on size wise, all right? You also want a blacktop paved area, just like we have at both schools now, during the winter, you need a space for kids to be able to play if they can, you know, are not going in the snow, put basketball hoops on there or other, you know, things that that you would want. I suggested putting a a an external generator to maintain the facility during power outages. If you're doing a a big project like this, it's the time to do it. What Hall School loses power, it's it's not an issue, you don't even know it, you could be in an assembly. When you lose power at Center School, you know it, and those emergency lights only last so long. You still have your water, but you you know, your heat, you're having an ice storm, are you gonna send in a a custodian to keep filling a portable generator? It's the time to put in a full size one if you do a renovation or build a new building. The the fields, let me finish, Anne, and then I'll I'll let everybody fire about any of the things that were at ideas. The field space, I would really suggest that you put everything in one location. Right now, at the middle school, you don't have a baseball field on site. They have to travel to the town office building to play baseball. And you know, it creates safety issues, you've now don't have an administrator on site in in two locations. If you renovate Hall School and they can squeeze in fields there to create a soccer, softball, and baseball, I think that's something that you should ask to do. You want to think that perspective from PE and you know, any of the community use. The picture on the bottom is my dreamland. That is a full turf space that is for softball, baseball, and soccer. You take away a lot of the maintenance, you take out the mowing, there is still maintenance that you need to do, but it that right there shrinks the amount of space you need, so even though it's, it looks like it's dirt, it's not, it's just brown turf. The other piece of this is you could generate revenue. I will tell you that when we travel for soccer and we go up to Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Youth Leagues have put in turf fields at elementary schools, and every time there's a game on a weekend, they're charging a hundred and seventy five dollars for a game, and they're bringing in revenue to pay for the maintenance of those spaces. If you add lights, you could potentially rent those spaces until eleven PM at night. So it's it it's not something that, you know, OSCGR might say absolutely not, but you could ask if you wanted to, and the last thing there is the natural security features. Things like, you know, outdoor features where you can use boulders for safety, you know, blocking cars going through where they look natural, landscaping, things like that are much prettier than a bolster, and if you know what a bolster is, it's that concrete pole that just comes out of the ground, they're great, but they're pretty ugly, and if you can find ways to use natural materials to for those security things. That's a suggestion, so I threw a lot at you, and it's not everything. Any comments on any of these questions on any of these or additional outdoor features that you would like to see?
You can tell I'm not a huge sports fan, I don't know if the baseball and softball fields are different dimensions and therefore are not played in the same space.
They are, they're different dimensions. And the spaces, so I gave Scott Pelman from Colliers the the size, the dimensions that the middle school fields would need to be, and that's, you know, what he would try and fit in, or we would give the design team to try and fit in. That right there is about the smallest space that you could do. The negative to what you're looking at there, Michelle, in that picture, is the outfielder. So if you wanted to have a baseball and softball practice at the same time, it's big enough that they're probably not gonna hit each other, but a ball could definitely roll in. If you have enough land, you would separate your baseball and softball field, one of them could, just like we have now at Hall School, where the softball field overlaps the soccer field. They're in different seasons, that's okay. You know, but if you could separate the three, and if you go grass, I suggest you se- separate the three because the amount of abuse and where those fields get when they're grass and the overlap is significant.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anne?
Um, Phil, going back to the generator, um, we would probably use this school as our town's emergency location. I wonder if there's any grant money or anything like that that we could use to, you know, purchase things like the generator that would also be used with the town? Just an idea, just like talking about the sports and renting out the fields. You know, another way to kind of recoup some of the money.
Yeah, I don't know that answer, I I know that there's been some security grant money. I don't know, and who knows with the Biden plan with all the infrastructure thoughts that are out there, I got an email yesterday, it was very long and very confusing. But I'm not sure, it's it's about infrastructure and schools and ventilation and and you know, there's a lot in it. So I don't know if there's gonna be grants or not, but listen, if it saves some money for OSCGR, they're gonna tell us, apply for a security grant for that, they would let us know.
Because it also might tie in with climate change and and all of that money, because we're gonna need to, we're gonna need more emergency shelters as we have more weather incidents, you know?
Yeah.
Herb?
Phil, when you build a new school, does the state require that you have a certain amount of space and acreage so that you can put your building down and also the fields that you're talking about?
Correct, so there's a space size, you know, acreage in their their plan, what I'm gonna call their plan book, it's their document book that has all the the identification, and they do it by the number of acres is based upon your population. The number of acres is based upon your population. So we think we would need around nineteen acres if we went to a new site. Um, plus or minus i- is, uh, on O S C G R. If you found perfectly sixteen acres and you said, look, if we want to go to a new site, we have a site that's sixteen acres, would you be okay with it? If you could demonstrate that it could fit on that site. I think they would approve it, but that's on O S C G R, not us. They actually, if you go to a new site, if you consider building on a new, um, piece of land. They go out and they look at it and they make sure it's going to work and they want to know. Cause they look at things like, um, you know, is there already, you know, certain power, um. A- availability out there. Uh, is there, there public water there or you're going to have a well? They look at those things because they realize, you know, if you're, it, it could be more money. If you're have, having to bring in power, you know, way down to a different part of town. Um, and that's typically on the town. That's not on O S C G R.
They, they require testing for, um, septic systems, things like that.
Correct. So they do, there's all sorts of, um, there's a different phases of the testing of the land that you have to go through. And you submit those out. So you make sure, um, you know, the, the land is suitable. I'm going to venture a guess, Herb, and I don't know this for certain. Um, but I'm going to venture a guess. The, the Youngerman property that has come up in conversation. Um, I'm not so sure that went out for all sorts of tests. Before it went to, um, to be identified to be used. Uh, because now it's, it's owned by the town, but you know, the, the reports say the best we can say about that piece of property is that it's owned by the town. Um, so. O S C G R will, will not allow you to build a, a school on a, on a new piece of property. If it's not suitable, number one, or number two, it's going to cost a fortune. To move dirt or bring in things because they're paying a chunk of that bill.
Rihanna has her hand up.
And also the.
Wait, yeah, go ahead.
Also the wells, we have to, you'd have to, in Wellington, we don't have water coming in generally. From elsewhere. So we have to have water.
Right. And those are all things you would test ahead of time. And obviously, location, it depends on the location. So Hall School's on, on town water. Um, and so is Center School. But there are very few locations in town that have that. So, you know, you'd have to consider that, you know, there are certain locations that, you know, might be easier to access than others. Um, to, to bring in, in water or. It, it, you know, you have to drill and find out, can we get enough water here as the, as, you know, if, if you had to drill a well.
Right.
Rihanna?
This is fun, isn't it? Okay, so I jotted down lots of things. I love the idea of an outdoor classroom and or gathering space that would have been so handy. Um, in these last few years, I love what you said about thinking about maybe a canopy for shade and rain, so we can still go outside. I love the idea of a garden and students have an opportunity to do some farm to table work. That would be incredible. Um, some other things that I thought of include, um, when you're talking about picking up and drop off. When a parent has to come midday to pick up their, from the nurse's office or. As in like an early dismissal or even to drop them off as tardy. It would be really great if there was easy parking for that. Um, with easy access to, say, the nurse or offices. Um. And when you're talking about outside and like the playscape area, there have to be gates and locks in certain places too. Um, that is just something to think about where you're talking about. Um, I would love a shed out there to store some of the outdoor toys and activities for all of the children. That would be pretty great if we can squeeze that in it now or later. Um, and then exterior bathroom access because I've been at Hall at a. Game before and nobody could go to the bathroom because the doors were all locked. And we couldn't get in and that's a pretty uncomfortable situation. So just some way that there was like. A bathroom that was closed off from the rest of the building that just had a door to the outside would be awesome. Um, and then the only other thing I really thought of was when you were talking about the fields. You have baseball, softball, soccer, but if we're going to look far into the future, we might want space for lacrosse. Or across country or other sorts of things we could possibly be adding. So. I think we might want to keep that in mind and how fields can be used for different purposes too.
So I just added to the, your, my list here, the outdoor path for cross country. One of the things I'll tell you about that type of field and you only see it lined for soccer. Um, we were in mass for a tournament a couple of weekends ago and we played on a, in a facility. The number of lines on this field was incredible, but you could see the lines for each team, but it was good. I mean, they had field hockey, they had soccer on it and they had lacrosse. And they also, if you turn and I'm going to, can you see my mouse on screen? On the soccer field?
Yes.
They also had run lines this direction for many soccer fields, one here and one here. So if you wanted to rent half this, half a field to someone, you could do that. Um, but you can actually line your fields and I would actually suggest it, even if you didn't have a field hockey team. Because you now have another potential for rental. Now a field hockey team might come in to play field hockey. Um, and it's easy to see the, the lines across from, you know. This, you know, determine which lines are which, but it opens up your opportunity to rent out a space. And it's hard to find.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to put a track around the fields?
Uh, we do have a visitor. I'm gonna, you did that already. You're quick.
I did. I was speedy. I saw it pop up.
Go ahead, Anne. Sorry, your question.
Would it be possible to put a track around the fields on the outside? That would be great when the kids are running the mile, you know, or when, uh. You know, do they do track in middle school?
Some schools do, you can. It depends on the size. The challenge for us. Um, is I'm not sure the cost for a track is gonna. Make sense and I'll tell you why. Our school is, when we start talking about middle school, typical middle school sports. Six, seventh, eighth grade, even if you included fifth grade. If you field the softball team. And you're talking about maybe fourteen students. Uh, there's not a lot more to field the track team. And that's why we only offer, you know, don't offer a bunch of sports because. You wouldn't have, be able to field a team. If you had six people that wanted to do. Field hockey and six people that want to do soccer and six people that want to do cross country, the only one that could run would be cross country. So it's something to think about. I don't know that O S C G R would, would fund a track. But they might fund a, a walking path or a, an exterior, you know, think about Anne when we were at Birch. They had that driveway that went around. Uh, if you did just a, a paved path, kind of like River Road Park. That was all in view, you could use something like that in, in P E. So, um. But yeah, I hear you.
Our school has a track and field team. And we just use whatever's available. So like the students run in the parking lot after school and they. Make their own like javelin throw area. So you can make do certainly if you really want it.
Herb, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I, I was going to mention a track, track, but Anne mentioned it. So I was thinking of a tennis court too. Well, there are some middle schools that, that have tennis courts and they field teams and things like that.
Yeah, and that's.
Kind of expensive and it, that means you have to have extra room, you know, player is.
Right. I think the challenge, I think those are all great ideas. I think if we had eight hundred students, it, it's easier to push those things. If we wanted to create a new program, um, that's something that you could say, hey, we want to create.
Oh, it looks like Phil froze. I see other people moving, so it's definitely Phil. Um, I think the point he's making is that it, we have the option of. Uh, deciding if there are new programs that we would want to field or expand. Given the, the property that we might have opportunities to do that, that we couldn't. For example, we couldn't field the tennis team right now unless they were playing, you know, uh, in the gym with, uh, indoor tennis types of equipment.
Yeah, the other thing we could do is.
We're in a position, Michelle, to, uh, uh, bring up almost anything, any sport. There are many. Is, uh, lacrosse and this fencing. I mean, I, I can think of a million sports that middle schools are doing now. Uh, we're not, we're not doing it because of us, our size and, and other limitation. I understand that. But there are so many wonderful sports out there that could be incorporated into this and. And these are simply specs that we're looking at here and, you know, it's, uh, a lot of things that we'd like to have. We would, we know that it's not, probably not going to be possible.
Right, but the, the cool thing that he was saying about adding some additional lines, you could put lines on the field and you could play field hockey for gym class. You wouldn't need to have a field, a team, but if you don't have the lines, you can't really have a feel of what a field hockey field feels like. So there are some things that aren't expensive that just would require us to add in. And some of them, I think he's right, are out of bounds that we're never going to field. A baseball team and a softball team and a track team and a cross country team, you know, at the same time. But tennis people only play a couple at a time. So we might be able to do tennis and baseball. Or, you know, so, so we may, there may be some things that we've, um, even with our small size, might not require a large team size.
The other thing we could do is keep things in mind, not necessarily. Build the structure for it, but kind of set the space aside for a later date that maybe we would have more money. To be able to add something at a later date.
Definitely. That's always a possibility. The, since Phil has the presentation on his laptop, we'll wait for him to log back in. Um, Herb, I believe you are currently the host of the meeting. I'm still seeing that, um. That the rest of us are co-hosts, but you may have something that pops up on your screen that, uh, we don't see. So I'm just saying, pay attention if anything happens on your screen. I. I, I got a, I got a, uh, noise when Ralph joined us. So I'm assuming that Phil would join us with that same noise. The one thing that I thought when I was looking at those, the, the outdoor pieces was room for seating. So as a parent who, uh, had a child who would have stayed at the playground for eight hours on a Saturday if I'd let her. Um, there was never a comfortable place for spectators or others. So, um, even a place either near the playgrounds and near the playing fields, similarly, we're going to need place. We don't need a full stadium stands. I'm just saying a place for, uh, spectators and parents to, to be comfortable and adequate space for that. So even if we didn't. Pay for and put up some, one small set of bleachers, we could put that down the road. We need room for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another thought is maybe, um, benches that could be donated in memory of somebody or something like that.
Absolutely. There, there's ways that we could do something like that as long as we make sure we have adequate space for it.
Yeah.
Right? So, uh, it's when you're trying to get things in tight that you cut out the, the margins and the margins is where the seating is. So. Okay, Phil, nice to see you back. Can you, uh, sound?
Unmute yourself, Phil.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I T is not, like, doing some work.
Um, you know, the one more thing about the outdoor classroom, um, Phil had mentioned that they had courtyards. And one of the courtyards was completed and it had four picnic tables. Which, um, you know, were relatively large. Now you have to remember that their class sizes are between twenty and twenty-five. They have large classes. So you could seat an entire class at those four picnic tables. With six children at each picnic table. So that was kind of nice.
Hey, Phil, if it happens again, forward me your, um, your presentation and we'll just keep looking through it when you're off.
Okay.
Okay.
That was weird. I had nothing, no wifi and I'm, I'm wired. So that was strange. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Glad to see you come back.
So the next one feature is indoor features is, uh, high efficiency internet provider. Alright, so outdoor features. Any other outdoor features that you want me to, and again, this is just for today. Any other outdoor features that you're interested in, in, want to discuss or want me to add?
Um, so we were saying in your.
So do they, uh, require fencing around the entire field?
Um, I, I don't know if they require it, but I would suggest it. Um, it just. It's one of those school security thing, features that they actually recommend. Because it creates a, a very specific separation of areas. And that's something they really, uh, they really look for. So I would suggest.
Your payment on our part or would the state reimburse us?
No, that would be part of the, the reimbursement. They would, they would be okay with that. Yep. Yeah. So like, if you look at the playground, Herb, on the bottom right. That, that playground there is, is, um, actually. I believe that entire area is fenced in. It's just not right there. So part of it's softball field. Um, part of it is, is the parking lot. There's fence that goes around certain sections of it. Whereas the preschool one is actually just around the preschool area.
Okay.
So we were also saying that, um. Even though you may not be able to build all the fields now, we could. Kind of set aside spaces for different things for maybe the future.
Sure. I think they would want you to do what you, whatever you have programmatically. I'd be very surprised. Um. And again, if you're going to do something big, meaning a renovation or a new school. You want your, you want your, what you want. You need your field spaces. You have a baseball team. You have, we can't field a softball team right now because we don't have a coach. But you have, you have those programs in place already. Shall I move on?
Yep.
Okay. The next one is building features. So think with this one. Building features that are just general, so not specific to a space, internal space or a classroom. But general. It, it is no, um, mistake here that number one is natural light throughout. And I, I linked the resource. I'll share this with you. Not going to click on the resource. It's just one of those things where. Um, natural light and there's studies that, that, that back this up. That natural light is critical and i- impacts student learning. Um, and so when we start talking about natural light, we're looking for natural light throughout the building. And you know, when you go into Center School's not bad. Um, there's only a few spaces, like the cafeteria is an internal space. Um, but the majority of spaces at Center have, have the, you know, the, the, the natural light coming in. Um, whereas Hall School has internal spaces that. We would want, if they renovated that building, for them to find ways to maximize natural light. Um, it impacts learning and it's something that I think is really important. Um, I pointed out when we, we did the tour at Birch Grove. That we were standing on an internal hallway between, uh, the office. And the exterior of the building. And we could look from the internal office, or sorry, the, the internal hallway into an office space. Which had a window, which then had another window. And you can see all the way to the outside. And being able to see. Um, the natural light impact, this is part of the natural light, is it, being able to see. The exterior, the woods, the, the nature, there's studies tied to that as well. A, and, um, you know, just being able to, to feel like you're part of nature. So it sounds simple. It's hard to do, but the natural light is a big piece of that. Building features that are, um, and there it is, natural, technology rich. Um, able to, you know, extend, you know, wherever we go. If it's, you know, thinking about how we've gone with our cell phones now, five G is the big thing. Well, what's ten, I'm making it up. What is ten G going to look like? Will our, our facility be able to, um, easily update to that? So it's got to meet our wifi to support our one-to-one initiatives. It's got to have the right servers to, to meet our, our technology needs. I took a picture for Kevin Icart, um, who's, works in I T for us of their, um. Their I T room of all of the wires neatly organized, labeled. Uh, going up the tubes, uh, right now, we've, we've think about in our facilities. Um, obviously it's newer. I mean, we've, we've pushed wires all over the place. They're spliced. It's not pretty. That's something that you want. The other piece, technology rich, security wise, is something, think about what you put into C I P. Um, things that are connected to security that could be your, your clocks with a P A system that is a lockdown. Things that are connected to security that could be your, your clocks with a PA system that is a lockdown. Any of those things with flashing lights. When I went to Ram Middle School, there's a sign that says, just says lockdown of progress. And when it's, that strobe is on next to it, you know, there's a lockdown going on. Those are all part of technology rich, whether it's connected to student learning or safety. Obviously you have to comply with current building and fire codes. Um, we're grandfathered into some things right now. If you were to renovate Hall School, you would have to meet, if you take state funding, you have to meet all those current building and fire codes. And if you do significant renovations, even without their funding, you would want to make sure you're meeting those, those, those codes. That contemporary design for school safety, there's a lot of things that you can integrate. And again, I, this is one area I don't go into great detail about. Um, the one example I'll give you is a double vestibule. Uh, when we walked into Birch Grove, they have a double vestibule. It was open for us because it was after hours. No students were attending at the time. Uh, there were students in after school program. But you are buzzed in to the building into a vestibule. Then you speak with office staff and then you're buzzed into the actual building if you need to come into the office. So it's a two set, you know, two parts, you know, to, to get into the, the building. Um, and they had a little pass through, you know, area from the office. It was behind bullet resistant glass. Um, and so those are things that you would want to build into, um, your design. The next piece is a bigger question of what are you looking for? Man, if you know Mansfield's building, they went net zero. They're, they're one of the first buildings in the country that will be net zero. And that zero means that you're, whatever you're using for, for, you know, power, you're generating all of that. Um, and so it's supposed to be a net zero. Um, one of the things about that is if you change something in the future, you can no longer claim net zero if you're not actually net zero. So you can consider things like that and things like geothermal, um, solar panels. All of those things apply to that. Would you want to go that route? I don't have that information for you today, but if it's something that you want to learn about, I can have some presentations to learn about that. Some of them are more expensive on the front side of it. What, and you also, also would have to determine, um, would, how high of a priority is this? Would I leave out something else to be able to do this? And again, I said modern mechanical electrical plumbing systems. They had the airport style bathrooms at Birch Grove, meaning just the open, you go on the side. They are, um, they're, uh, an emergency shelter. So they had lock showers um, in one of their sections. Um, they did not have solar. I do not think they had geothermal. Uh, they did have adjustable LED lighting and it adjusted based upon their sensors to how much daylight was in the room. You could override it. I will say it was pretty impressive. And so just thinking about where we, where we have come in lighting and just the last 10 years and the Siemens project. It's the, the LED lighting was, i- i- is a savior. They, uh, they decreased their square footage at Birch Grove a little bit when they did their project. But their facilities director said their, their bills, there were about $2,500 less per month. Uh, I think it was around a $10,000 to $7,500 for now. And they went from 30% of the building being air conditioned to 100%. So the significant, there is savings in going to AC and a, a, you know, a good building envelope. One of the things we noticed, and I'll be honest, I'd be curious to know what Ann thought about it. I think Brianna and I kind of looked at each other and shook our heads. Their external window, windows do not open. So they don't have windows that open in their, in their school. I didn't notice emergency windows, but that was part of the maintain the building envelope and having the AC. So what were you going to say, Ann?
I was going to say that was going to be my question at the end. And I would support opening and closing windows, but.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's one of those things where it, it, you lose the savings when you allow that because you have AC. Um, I don't know that. Um, but again, there's studies for AC. Learning is maintained a lot at a, a lot higher level when you have ACs, but obviously in the, in those hot months. So this would be one of those things. Accessibility for all community members. Um, it has always bothered me that, um, the upper wing of hall, of center school is not accessible. When you, if you, whether you renovate or you build new, you want, it's got to be 100, you have to meet ADA. Um, and going into cloud, whether it's a classroom or a hallway, you want to keep that in mind. We saw loading dock, a loading dock for deliveries that was, I, I know this sounds silly. Uh, if you've ever watched a tractor trailer try and drop something off at center or hall schools, it is an absolute nightmare. Um, it sounds silly. At Birch Grove, they had a loading dock that went directly into one side. When they opened the garage, one side was for maintenance supplies and, and deliveries. And the other side was the cafeteria. So the main deliveries out of larger units were, um, made sense. It was really well done. It sounds silly, but it's, it's really important. You start thinking about, um, you know, putting in new landscaping or breaking curbs because they're backing over something. Um, moving tractor trailers near kids, not things we want to do. So those are things that, you know, you want to have in your building features. Finishes that are designed for ease of maintenance. They had finishes that did not require a wax. I'm not so sure about one of the finishes. There were scratches on the floors that we did see. However, not have, having to strip and wax an entire building. Um, number one for safety, because it's actually a dangerous thing to do for our staff members. But if you can pick design features that are washable, that don't have, need loads of maintenance, there's savings in that. And so that goes everything in the bathroom being tiled and just going in with a, a, a spraying machine. And there's savings in that. So those are things that when you think about finishes, it's something that you wanted to, you know, say you would want to have that. Bathrooms that are in close proximity to classrooms, um, is really important. When we get to the classroom section, you're going to see that it, you know, we, it's, we say pre KK bathrooms are in the rooms. But in this area, you want bathrooms to be close. And then drinking fountains with bottle filling stations in close proximity to classrooms. Simple things, um, but those are building features that, you know, in your design, you would want to have in your ed specs. Any questions about these or comments about what you would like to see or additional general building features that you think are, um, really critical?
And then Ann?
The, uh, I like your idea in the natural lighting throughout. I think that makes a building really cheery, especially for students. I, I like a lot of glass, a lot of open area so that you can see the outside. On the mechanical end of it, not too many buildings have geothermal. Uh, I know that when we renovated out East Con out in Hampdenville, we put in thermal, uh, tur- geothermal, uh, system. And I think it's still operating, but, but you don't see that very often. But I think it is a very effective, uh, way of heating. The solar panels, uh, a lot of school, most schools, I guess, are going with solar panels. And apparently they're doing, doing the job. Eo Smith example is they put, uh, solar panels everywhere.
Herb, I, I thought it was interesting about the geothermal. Um, their intermediate school in Tallahassee grades three through five, and they retrofitted that building, um, with geothermal. I don't think they built, uh, the new Birch Grove with geothermal though. And I wondered if they had problems with it or if it was too expensive or wouldn't be reimbursed. I would like to find that out. Um, it's something to consider. And again, it's something, if you want more information on, I'm glad to get somebody to, to, to come in and talk to you more about that. Um, it, I don't know, and Scott Pelman couldn't join us tonight, but one of the things I'd like to ask him is, do, do you include that in your ed specs or do you simply say, we want the most reasonably, costing, efficient, mechanical plumbing, electrical things that we can do? Is that enough? Or do you need to say, um, we want geothermal, um, you know, or you could say? So, and the state OSGR was trying to convince us to put solar panels on when we were talking about doing the roofs. Um, but with the, the project, if we stay there, it would convince you to do that. If you do do a renovation, I think they would say the same thing. But yeah, good, good points.
You'll be looking into that probably down the road.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ann.
I just wanted to mention that the, um, generator was kind of hidden over by the loading docks. So that was, um, out of the way of the children, you know? It was a whole little area that children, I don't believe had any access to.
Correct. By design, for sure.
Brianna?
Thanks. Um, they had, there were, at Birch Grove, there were huge fans in the gym. Also, I think that was because it was such a high ceiling. It was going to help the airflow. And also that was sort of their auditorium area as well, where like their, um, audience would be sitting. So that was really the only fan that needed to happen. I mean, when you think about a classroom that doesn't have air conditioning, sometimes you've got, let's see, the old box fan you drug up from your basement and something or other a kid brought, you know? And that takes a lot of electricity to run all of that. So that air conditioning and that big fan up top made me really think. But the windows not being able to open to fresh air definitely bothered me. Sometimes air conditioning is too much for people. I guess the school would have to agree whether it's an AC day or not. But also for me, that's like an emergency thing. I want to know I can get out that classroom door or have an exterior exit, which the preschool classrooms did because they were able to go right to their courtyard and their place, place gate. But to me, that's something I know, security wise, would make me feel a lot better. Also because I could do things like, you know, if I had an emergency, like an ill student, out the door we go. Um, if I need to dry some rain boots or, uh, whatever else from the morning, you know, painting even, it can go right out the door. So that, um, that's kind of important, I think, or just something to think about. The, Phil mentioned the airport style bathrooms. The one thing that made me insane about that is there were two different ones. And one had boys on one side and girls on the other. And then the other bathroom was the opposite. And he, the principal said that the children got it and it wasn't a problem. But I was like, how many poor children went in the wrong side? And we're like, what in the tarnation is happening here? And he was talking to us too. I mean, if you're doing a pre K to eight school, that's a lot of different size bodies that need toilets, urinals, sinks, everything, water fountains. Um, and you have to also consider with ADA, you're going to have a lot of people with different abilities and you might have some in wheelchairs and such. So they have to have access to all of that stuff and having it in their size in some way or accessibility is important to think about when you're trying to do all of these different, um, ages together. I loved the showers in the bathrooms that they weren't everywhere. They just had like a locked one in those like big shared bathrooms. But that is fantastic. It could be so helpful for so many students who need it. And I was trying to remember, were there drains in those big bathrooms? Phil or Ann, do you remember? Like in the floor?
I didn't notice.
I didn't either. But if they're going to like hose it down to clean it, there must have been some kind of drain, I would have imagined. I don't know. Um, the gym will need to be huge so that you can have two classes going at the same time, of course. We lost Phil again. And a cafeteria might have to hold overlapping lunch waves. So some thought should be given to that too. We don't have a ton of kids, but if the first graders are having their lunch and in come the third graders, there has to be seating for them or some flow that can work for those kinds of things. And that's just stuff from working in a pre K to eight school that kind of comes to mind that you got to think about that's different than when you separate the two buildings from each other. Just some thoughts.
You know, back to the windows. I wonder if we could have, um, I know in my classroom, I had all regular windows and then I had this one special window, which kind of, oh, it was the one pane of glass and it opened and closed like a door. I wonder if each classroom could have a window like that for emergency drills, you know, or emergencies. So you could get the children in and out. And that would at least be one way to get some fresh air in the classroom on those in between days. You know, where you don't really need heat and you don't really need air conditioning.
I do want to recognize that we do have a lot, we still have three whole sections to, to go through that I think if, if an idea has been put forward, we can assume that it's, it's certainly something that, uh, we want to allow people to express. But we want to not drill down into too many levels of details or speculation. Herb, I did see your hand. Were you?
Yeah, just a quick question in regard to the custodial staff. Phil, uh, will, will they be given an office in the, uh, near the delivery area or, or something like that? Would they have some place where they?
Sorry. Yes, they will. Sorry. I got dumped again. So I'm emailing Michelle the document just in case.
Okay.
Brianna, I hope the recording is, is good on your end because I heard nothing of what you said.
So I think we're good. I think it, it looked like it maintains recording even if you pop.
Yeah. I didn't get any of it. So, okay. Let's get back to where I was. Of all days. Okay. So, uh, and again, this is the first go around. So if you have additional things you think about, please just share them. Um, and we can add them in. And Michelle just mentioned the detail. Let me tell you, the document has the detail in it. And speaking of which, here's an example. So this is one of, of the pieces of the pages. So if you look at what's, you can see my screen, right?
Yep.
So this section over here, this is what a portion of the document looks like. It identifies every space. It identifies what the square footage is, what you're looking for. The number you need, six classrooms for grades three and four, each classroom is 800 square feet. What does it have for all of these things here? Toilet, sink, classroom storage, teacher storage, lighting, flooring. There's one of these for every space unless it's the same. So if you do, typically you'll do like, okay, preschool. There'll be a, a preschool classroom. They'll have their own because they might have their own bathroom. If it's the same as kindergarten, it might be the same. If it's the same, you would create the, you know, would you say preschool in kindergarten? And you would say the number you need. So this is, there's literally one of these for everything. And, but it, it, it just gives you a sense of what's there. So this is an important page and it doesn't look all that important, but it is. A big portion of your job is to identify the programs. I just heard that it's a bigger issue than, than Wellington. So I might drop out again. So FYF I do and.
I have, I downloaded this, this screen and I can share the screen if you drop off.
And I will call on if I need to. So I just listed here the school programs that are, um, would be part of the ed specs. And when they give you a sense of the cafeteria kitchen is not necessarily an educational program, but it's a program that you would build in. Okay? So the first one, um, is preschool and I'm going to do that last, even though it's first. So these are the programs that I think, um, and I hope I didn't miss any so far. But when I, when you talk about these over here, this is what you would have. So the general ed classrooms are, you know, a kindergarten classroom, a first grade, second grade, third grade. You'd have all of those as part of your program. Not of heads. I'm assuming we're going to keep, um, our foreign language, correct? So that's would be, be built into your ed specs, meaning we want a class, a classroom space for Spanish. Right now that is K eight, that's exactly how I will write the ed spec. Okay? STEAM. This means there's a STEAM program and you would want to maintain some sort of STEAM space. STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. It's a theme. It's, it's that maker space. It's all of that stuff. Right now we have, I have it built into a common space. I'll explain later on. But I'm assuming you want some sort of STEAM space, correct?
Correct.
Okay. General music band and chorus. That's a program we have. We're going to maintain that, right? Visual arts is the arts. You're going to maintain that. If you wanted something specific like, hey, we'd love to have a darkroom. You would have to write that into your ed spec. If it's a new program, you have to explain how you're going to use it, but realize again, add space, okay? You need intervention spaces. You need several spaces for your special education programs. You need a library media center. And again, pre K to eight, it's not an elementary section in the middle school section. It is a, some sort of library media center. Obviously you need, if you have a PE and health program. You need some sort of administrative suite that includes a nurse's office, principal's office. You know, all of those things you would have to, in that location. You have an SBC now, so you would probably want to have, build it so that there was a, an SBC in, in whatever you do. I will tell you, Talon has a family resource center. Michelle, I will be reaching out to you to talk about that because I'm curious about grant funding for that. If that's something that we could start, this would be a prime time to do it, whether you do a renovation or new building. If you could write the grant and get the grants and start a program. They have spaces that are specifically used for FRC. They have a before school program, they have an after school program. And they even use it for like play based programs, I believe during the day that are more like preschool or pre, you know, birth to three type program. So it's something that you could consider. And then cafeteria and kitchen. So you need to have those spaces. Do you see something, you, can you think of any other programs that I did not include in here? And I'll tell you if it's elsewhere or if it's, if I missed it.
Go ahead, Herb.
Yeah. Area. Maybe you have it somewhere else, Phil. Auditorium. I, I don't see that on here or.
It's so.
It would change to me that.
It is, it is considered to be part of this. So if we do something, it would be in, when we do the ed specs, if you want to do it all.
And there goes Phil. Okay. I will load up the screen and see if it lets me share my screen. I did download the file, so I have it here handy.
On Phil, are you still there?
He's not there. Herb, would you be, would you be interested in what they did in Talon for that? The, um, gym opened up into the cafeteria and the gym had a stage.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure I like that though. We did that, you know, renovation at Hall School and you've got a gymnasium, you have a stage and then you have a music program on this, on the stage, which is, which is a terrible situation really. Compared with, you know, what some schools have today, you know? I've seen a lot of schools, middle schools around Connecticut and, and they, some of them have lovely auditoriums. And they use it not only for the school, but also the town use it, you know, and they've read it out and that type of thing. But it doesn't have to be a huge, I mean, we have a small school. So you could have a small stage and auditorium, like a theater in the round.
I think that you're right, you're right, Herb, that having the.
The act school, the act school, when we renovated there, we, it was a center, it was a theater area. And we took all of that out and built a nice little cozy auditorium with a probably a hundred seats. It's almost like cabbarette style with a theater in the round. In other words, there are a lot of things you can do in this area in the school. We don't need a thousand room auditorium. We need one, probably three or 400 seating, three or 400 or less really. Be used by the town and for town meetings. It could be used by the school for shows that they put on and also the music program and band and so forth. But it's just a thought.
I think that that's exactly what we need now, Herb, our thoughts, so that we can, you know, put it out there and see what we get back in terms of cost and what the state's willing to pay for. So this is the right time to bring those up. Phil, I can see that you're on the screen, but I don't know if that means you called in and you're not on video, but you are on mute and we cannot hear you, just in case that is the case. I'm gonna see if we can ask you to unmute. Can you all see my screen? You can still see the slides?
Yeah. Are we still keeping this?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is it still being taped, what we're doing?
Yes. Yes. Flashing on and off.
Okay. Yes, it's recording. Great. Um, other pieces of, um, things related to education specifications and school programs. Phil had mentioned briefly the summer program and the after school program, especially because that relates to our special education supports. So I kind of see, that doesn't usually need extra space, it just needs space for some storage. So I think storage space is gonna be one of the things we really have to look at. Tracy, did I see your hand up? You might have just moved, moved your, moved your hand and I didn't see it.
No, I do have, I did have my hand up.
Okay.
Just to, I, I agree with what Herb was saying about a larger meeting space, auditorium, whatever you want to call it, but it would also be good just for, like whole grade levels, when you talk about getting seventh and eighth grade, they, they sometimes do activities as groups too, that would be better beneficial to have them in seats rather than on the floor of the gym kind of thing, or having to set up chairs or whole grit, you know, even whole school activities, if you could fit everybody in, it's kind of nice. Not sure, Phil, if like a teacher, the teacher workspace slash teachers, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You know, a staff lounge where there's copy machines and places for that kind of work. And then also a meeting space, you know, right now at Hall and Center, we're, I'm not sure it's center anymore because I think it may have been taken over by intervention, I'm not sure. But when you have to go for a PPT or a five or four meeting or just a meeting with a grade level or whatever, a space for that. And that maybe is in a different place, I don't know.
A conference room.
Yeah.
And sometimes it means a small conference room and a medium conference rooms because sometimes you can have more than one meeting at any given time. Sometimes it doubles as like the, you know, an offset off the principal's office, for example, so.
And did you, or Brianna, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Anna, Brianna, did you talk about the, the Birch Grove stage?
Yes, a little bit. The only thing I did not mention is that, guess what's behind this stage?
There you go, that's what I was.
The music room.
It's, it's very well done though, like.
Okay.
It was very, very well done. The back of that wall, that white wall you see in the picture is actually whiteboard. And I mean, it was a full classroom and it was soundproof. When we toured, there were kids playing in the gym and pretty loud, you couldn't hear a thing. It was silent. It was very well done. So it was a way they saved their space. But you know, that wall opened up in the cafeteria to extend space. So it was the gym into the cafeteria for a quote unquote auditorium or a gymatorium is, is it called? But then you could have a PE class and a music class running at the same time with that soundproof wall on the stage. It was, I thought it was very well done.
And there were a couple of offices on either side of the classroom. And they could also double as like dressing rooms if they're doing a play or something.
Yep. So again, this is really program based. This section is what programs you have. And Tracy, the things you just talked about are gonna be in two slides. You're gonna see those in a moment, okay? Any other programs that you can think of that are not there? Just let me know or, and I, if I miss him in another spot here, you'll see him in another spot because this is really program based. Okay?
Okay.
You want to go to classroom features?
Sure. Let's see if I can.
And I'm glad to try and share my screen again if you want, so it's bigger.
Let, let's just, I, I can make my screen a little bigger.
Oh, sorry, it was me. You, you're good. Okay, so, um, this is, think about just a general classroom. This is the specific, um, you know, for a, a fifth grade classroom or a kind of a first grade classroom. So number one, grades clustered together for collaboration. Right now, if you think about the elementary school, we have to have a, a classroom for every grade level downstairs and then upstairs. They, they can't be together because we don't have enough space for all those things to happen. So, you know, we want the first grade classes to be next to each other so they can collaborate. You want, obviously telephone intercom for hands free communication with the office, which means they call, hey, Michelle's being picked up. Okay, Michelle's on her way. I can just say it. I don't necessarily have to pick up the phone. That's a system you could have in place. That also could generate security messages for you automatically. And that are loud enough depending on the, the location. Windows for natural light with room darkening shades. I know those sound like they're opposites, it's kind of weird. But you know, when the sun is blazing in, you want to be able to pull a shade down, but you want as much natural light in those rooms as you can. Insulation for soundproofing, so it's the acoustics in the room. I will say Birch Grove had very good acoustics. It was very well done. This sounds silly, but multiple electron, electrical data outlets. There are some rooms, rooms in our district that there's a plug in the front of the room and a plug in the back of the room. You need plugs all over the place now. And I will tell you, we noticed in the, the, the office at Birch Grove that there was an extension cord running across the back counter. What does that tell you? You can't have enough of those and, and you don't want to be short on those things.
Phil, I would argue in large rooms, those are electrical outlets on the floor with the right kind of covers, the way they do in hotels. Because otherwise you're running extension cords to the middle and you gotta tape it down and that's tripping hazard too.
Yep, and I'm just gonna write down outlets for conference rooms too on tables.
Yeah.
So the sound field system is one of those things where the, the teacher can wear the mic. We really use them at the elementary level. They're optional in the middle school, not everybody has them, but it's a really good tool for helping students hear what you're saying. You can turn it on and off. You can use your sound field system to, if you're gonna show a video, you can use your sound field system so they can, it's, it basically, it surrounds the room, it's so much easier to hear. A teacher's not gonna strain their voice talking over a class. If they accept it, it's, it's a thing that, and you're gonna hear me talk about that actually next Tuesday, that we are, it's on our end of the year list that we're looking to use some of the funds from the end of the year for. You'll hear me talking about replacing one. You want a bathroom inside the classroom for pre K and K? I think first and up can walk down the hallway. If you think that first grade should have a bathroom in, it takes away space from the size of the classroom. It's what they're using right now. And actually, some of, some of our kindergarten rooms are not being used. The bathrooms are, they're, they're in rooms that don't have bathrooms. So those kids travel to the bathroom as well. So we know it can work. Is it easier to have a bathroom in your room? Probably. But you can, there's a fallback. So you know, a 900 square foot room might lose, you know, 100 square feet using, putting a bathroom in. So it turns into a, a little bit less, if that makes sense. The built ins for storage, Birch Grove had, did a really good job with built ins for student supplies. They had these locker cubbies built right in. Those are things that you want to have built in. And you want storage for education materials. The teacher complaints at Birch Grove were that they did not have enough storage. You want to maximize that as best you can in the, in the classrooms. I will tell you the pictures that I have in front of you, it's not enough storage. But it was really the sense for other things there. You want to have a sink in all the classrooms, being able to wash hands. You could determine if you want water fountains in rooms too, that's, that's very common. So you do a sink and a water fountain. When you put a water bottle filling station into every room, your price goes significantly up, other than a, a, just the fountain. So you can discuss that. The variety of tables and seating options, I think they probably had four or five different options at Birch Grove in every room. In these pictures here, they have the seats that are in the, the, the bottom in the green. The second picture in, they had the wobble chairs. And that's really what these pictures, pictures are showing, that there's not a traditional student desk that was in a row. They were in all sorts of formations. There were rooms that had them all together in lines. They had them in groups of three, groups of four, groups of five, groups of two. They were easily movable. You could create a, a kind of a U for a teacher. But it was, it was a very, and it was really the trapezoid desk that you see in the second picture down from the top. That's what they had. And the, the ability to move them is really important for our teaching philosophy. We want students to be working in groups. You're gonna learn about our Portrait of the Graduate on Tuesday night. It's perfectly aligned with what you see here. And you want desks that are, you can do that with. Yes, you can do that with a rectangular desk, but it's, it's harder to do that with a space of bringing them together. You want a Promethean board in the, in those classrooms? You want whiteboard and bulletin boards? I'm not sharing right now, so Michelle, if you want to try and share, there's a four minute video of flexible classrooms there at the bottom. You just gotta share your sound, it's a YouTube video. I think this gives you. Yep, I think it gives you a good idea of the type of spaces that we're talking about.
Okay. I'm just looking under the audio settings to make sure that I've got the, I don't want to suppress the background noises too much.
If you stop sharing this, Michelle.
Yep.
And then, um, you open the, you can go open the link.
Okay.
And then when you go back to share, it's gonna, the, the lower box, it'll say, do you want to share the audio? When you click share.
Okay, so it's opening up a YouTube window.
Correct? And now, once that window's open, click share again and, and you should be able to see, when you go to share, there's a, a box in the lower left that says share audio.
Oh, there it is, share sound. Optimize for video clip or no?
Sure.
Okay, let's see if this fits. Can you see it?
We can.
Yep.
Okay, let me make it bigger.
The transformation of space has completely elevated student engagement.
How do we provide the environments that kids need? Sometimes to be in their caves and be private, sometimes to be at the watering hole and working in small collaborative groups and sometimes in cross pollination where they're able to really share their work and work with each other.
My kids love to be under things, behind things, around things. We have five gallon buckets in my room that we sit on. We sit on crate seating that I made in my backyard out of a crate and some plywood and some foam. And I also just threw a lot of pillows on the floor. Offspring is like a baby, like a baby squirrel. Is that something that might be important to your research? It might be important. From day one, I've said, you may sit anywhere you like, as long as you're safe in our classroom.
That's working out really well. Keep on going.
We're really looking at, how do we support kids working collaboratively? And we can't do it if we're isolated in rows and every kid's an island.
The first thing that has to happen is the teacher has to have a vision for their room and a willingness to say, I'm gonna throw out some of this stuff. I don't need this traditional schooling equipment.
When you walk in to a room that we have done, you'll see tables. You don't see individual student workspaces. In some classrooms, you'll see at least three kinds of seating. You'll see flexible bookshelves that are mobile, that can be moved so that the room can be totally opened up or little nooks and crannies can be created so that everybody can see everybody and we can participate as a community.
It helps, um, plants grow.
Good.
How can you do it on a dime? What we've found is teachers are really hitting the streets the week that college kids leave town. What we've found is teachers are really hitting the streets the week that college kids leave town and seeing what they can buy for their classroom.
This is what I'd like you to accomplish today.
Beginning of the year is a good time to ask. If any of you have a couch or a chair that you have just sitting around, the kids would like to read on it and it could be a reading corner. And that's how I started. And then it grew and grew because it was so successful.
You're good at finding facts, so you just go to type it in. I love.
When the students walk in the room, I'll say, sit where you work the best.
When I like get down into a couch and more comfortable, it's almost like it's a bit distracting. Like, it's not exactly the environment I want to be working in, but for the other people, clearly, they have their optimum working environments.
Ms. Harris lets us like choose and also since she lets us choose, we ultimately choose what's best for us. We work better together and individually.
I've seen the kids not only be a lot more engaged, but they seem happier. They seem more likely to engage in conversation.
Because the space in this room has evolved throughout the year, the students' work has improved immensely. Their grades have improved. Just the conversations that they have with each other are so invigorating to hear.
Okay, and in the meantime, we have lost Phil again. Oh, and he's back. He's already started his video, so that's okay. Uh, let me see if I can jump to share my screen back to the uh, the PowerPoint though, because
Can I share one more thing that we saw in Tallinn that was great? They had these dividers um, that were magnetic. They were whiteboards and um, they were they were really successful in breaking up the classroom space. And the teachers just loved them. We we met a few teachers that were after school and they spoke very well of them.
Okay. Um, I cannot see all of your faces while we're on while I'm sharing the screen. So if uh, Phil, are you back on? Not yet. He is still off off.
I am sorry. Now I'm trying. I just the IT is coming in, so I just want to answer the phone real quick. Sorry.
Okay, um, were there other things that people saw or were thinking about in terms of classroom features? The one thing that I was thinking is in addition to sinks for hand washing, which often have to be lower depending upon the size of the children, um, we need sinks where we can wash things out. Um, and nothing's worse than trying to wash out a bucket that's ten inches tall and a sink that has eight inches of clearance. So, you know, places for that. Um, you know, doesn't have to be a full utility sink like to do your laundry in, but but sinks that are are usable and not just hand sinks was the one thing that came to my mind.
I guess I must spend a lot of time near the bathrooms at work because that's like what I keep on thinking about. Um, I heard what Phil said about losing space when you start putting bathrooms in first grade classrooms. If there could even be one, I think that would be great because some children going from kindergarten to first grade still do have significant toileting needs. And not just that, but um, special education students, students who receive special education services sometimes require um, easier access to bathrooms and also sometimes those bathrooms need space for changing tables, uh, especially in pre-K and K. And even as you go further up, depending on student needs, you might need to make sure there's room to have a changing table for a child of a variety of ages from pre-K to eighth grade available not far from where their learning space is. That's like a necessary thing to be thinking about. So even if it's not one that's in a bathroom all the time, it has to be something we're thinking about. Um, at my school, I know we've had to use like staff bathrooms before just because the door was wide enough to fit a wheelchair in and the older student was needing changing space. And that's hard to do when you haven't thought about it ahead of time. Um, so that was just something I wanted to make sure to point out that we need to think about that, not just for our younger students, but for everyone, really.
Yeah, that's important. And sometimes you can share a bathroom and have a a door into two classrooms and have one bathroom shared between two.
We call that the tunnel of love in our hallway. We have like six classrooms and you can go right classroom, bathroom, classroom.
Are there other things we want to jump in on here or shall we jump to the next screen?
Can I just ask you, Phil, how come, why is it that you separate pre-K and then put K through eight together?
What do you mean?
Well, you keep on saying like we have pre-K and then K through eight. In my head, it's divided up a little bit differently. Is there something like specifically separate about the pre-K program that is not applicable to K?
Um, a three-year-old furniture can look significantly different than a five-year-old. So sometimes I uh, uh, and I guess that's how they break it out in the ed specs.
Okay.
So, I I mean, basically what would happen is I would be talking to the kindergarten teachers and then preschool teacher and then you start, you know, you're changing furniture size. You might be changing sink height. You know, in some of these different rooms, those are things that you're looking at. Um,
It is. Some kindergartners are four and they're not five for a long time. And some of them are six, just about straight. Wondering how like if there was a certain reason why that was getting separated. Because like I said, in my head, pre-K is early childhood education and then for me, like primary starts one and so on, just.
Yeah, no, no good reason, other than just making sure people understand there's there's significant differences at that at those lower levels than, you know, a second grader. That's the idea.
Yeah, and a lot of kindergartners now because of the pandemic and everything, they did not have previous school experience. So when you're thinking about people who are brand new to school, um, it's not just our preschoolers anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
You ready for me to jump to the next page?
Herb has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Herb.
Uh, Phil? And of desks and whiteboards and uh, the equipment in the present classrooms that we have. Uh, we're going to uh, check those and go for new equipment and so forth of of that kind. Or are we gonna utilize the desks and uh, tables that we have and seating things that we have now?
Typically, you don't bring over a lot. Because if you renovate a building or you build brand new, um, and you bring over a thirty-year-old chip table and mismatched chairs and you put it into a new building, uh, it it doesn't match the environment. And so what uh, what I understand Birch Grove did, um, and their building was only twenty years old when they tore it down because of the foundation. They actually sent a lot of their furniture to one of their other schools. That was still in good use, you know. And um, but yeah, I would not suggest the majority of the things that we have um, be moved. If you did a building in the next five years, that I would not suggest moving much of anything. If your Promethean boards were still were in great working order and it was a way to save some money and we thought we were gonna get another five years out of them, um, that might be something you would move. But for the most part, our desks are mismatched, our chairs are mismatched. Um, I wouldn't suggest bringing those items over. Um, and it's part of the reimbursement.
And the science rooms would be updated and modernized as the same way?
Yep, and that's on the next slide, so.
Oh, okay.
There you go. Michelle, we have a big gray box across our view. And of course, it could be me today.
Hang on. Did it go away just there?
No.
Okay.
It's going away now.
Okay, I think that was the participant screen. I was looking to see if there was anyone else there. I think I'm going to stop sharing and reshare because that last screen, um, there we go, wasn't wasn't acting correctly. Let's see if I can do this right now. Okay.
There you go.
How's that?
All right, so the specialty area features. And again, specialty area, just simply meaning this is not a a just a typical classroom, right? This is gonna be something that's a little more specific. So one of the things that um, is is hot and we actually do this naturally right now where you see kids working out in the hallways at either school. Um, we saw breakout spaces at Birch Grove and a lot of school school districts are doing this now and they build um, in the um, one of the new buildings we saw in the state actually has one that looks like the picture in the lower right. Um, Newtown has a space like this. It's it's a breakout space. So that's hallway. In all of those pictures, except for the uh, Ann's board there that she's got on the lower left, um, that's the magnetic whiteboard uh, um, kind of divider that she took a picture of. The rest of those are breakout spaces and they're right. The idea behind those is it's a space where students could go out and and you have an extra classroom space. If you wanted to pull a small group as an interventionist, you could use that space. If you wanted to send out um, some sixth graders to go out and have a a spot to read, you could do that. And those are those breakout spaces are are meant for that. Um, they meet our Portrait of the Graduate, the collaboration, the communication. They allow for movement. Um, they're doing breakout spaces, I think, in the Mansfield School as well. So those are important. You don't do a ton of them, but you want a couple of them. Um, and a breakout space does not also need to be hallway. It could be a small, small office-type space as a breakout space as well. The administrative spaces, um, suites, we'll call it, um, is a specialty area and you could build your administrative suite however you want. If you want your nurse's office to be in your administrative suite, you could do that. Um, at the high school in Tallinn, it was not part of the administrative suite. It was in a a separate hallway and it was its own doorway and you go into the nurse's office. So um, you could build it and design it however you want. So you're gonna want to determine um, how you want it. Hall school, it's a separate room, right? It's its own. Center school, it's part of the um, office suite. So y- if you built a more of an admin office suite that was the nurse's office, you could put that in there, the principal's office, the counselors, social worker, conference room. That's kind of the Birch Grove model. The only thing I think they didn't include with the was the nurse's office. They put it in a different location. Um, but you want the uh, you'd have a core of that and that would be one of your specialty areas. The science labs is a specialty. Um, and I will tell you that I will recommend to you that we're gonna want at least two science labs, um, that are dedicated science labs. We found when I was in the intermediate, uh, assistant principal of the intermediate school in Tallinn, grades three through five, it was the old middle school. That's the building we were in. And we actually used, they had science labs. Um, and we use them regularly to set up science labs for students. So they would leave their regular classroom and go use them. Um, and in this case, we could use them for, you know, lower level. A third grade classroom could still use a science lab. So it's something that you would want to have in there. Tracy, here's your staff spaces. Work room, break room. Uh, I think all all the ladies, I was impressed with it too when we toured um, Birch Grove. They actually had a nursing room. What did they call it? A mother's room? Um, I I'm gonna tell you right now, we have a teacher that's nursing and and I feel bad. She locks her door and she's hiding in a corner in her classroom and um, you know, it it was a small room at at Birch Grove, but I thought it was really thoughtful. Um, you know, think about a a younger teacher wanting to come to uh, to work in district and they're look, see something like that. It's not a big space, but I thought it was super thoughtful. Um, so some to think about what you have for staff spaces. You want the work room, the bake room. Sometimes they're broken out by grades, like here's a pre-K through three section. Again, depending on the layout of your building. Um, here's a section that's four through six. Here's a seventh, eighth. You could have smaller rooms or you could have a larger room that was more central for people to go into. Um, and you could do the same thing for a break room, you know, where they they can eat. Excuse me, I actually liked what Birch Grove did where they had.
It's a meeting, sorry.
Okay, bye, Herb.
Thank you.
Um, so I I thought they did a good job at Birch Grove where they separated them out. Um, they actually had a work room that was separate than their, what we'll call their break room cafeteria. So you're not listening to watching somebody make copies while you're trying to eat your lunch. Sounds simple, but um, the laminator really stinks. For anybody that's in education that knows what a laminator smells like and you're trying to eat lunch, uh, you'll appreciate that comment. So uh, we have a television studio at Hall. I think you should plan for a smaller television studio-type place. I will tell you that in a general um, thing that we've developed with Scott Pelman so far, we have what I'll call a learning commons area. It's the second to last bullet there. It is a a common um, of library.
Oh, I think we are losing Phil again. Is that true? I think that is true. Um.
My internet connection is unstable.
Okay, so Phil, maybe you want to call in. We don't need to see yours. So if you get
This is the literally the last slide. Are you still with me?
Okay. Yep, we're still with you. Keep going.
All right, so it's connected to the learning commons, so you could put the television studio into that. But that's that's part of design. As long as you say, hey, we want a television studio to be part of it, they would design it in, okay? You obviously need very specific special education resource rooms and offices. I would, um, I, that's really separated out in the plan. It just gives you a sense that they're there. You might need a life skills room. That could be part of the special ed uh, program. Um, IT rooms, like I mentioned before, you need to plan for those. The mechanical, electrical, fire protection. They had a a fire protection room that was for the sprinklers. You need space for all of those. Those need to be built in. Um, the building maintenance, storage, indoor and outdoor. You need really specific spaces for your unified arts. Your art room is larger than a general classroom. It needs space for a kiln. It needs dry, needs drying racks. All of those things go into ed specs, okay? PE, if you want to have um, a basketball, middle school basketball game, you can't use that Bir- that Birch Grove gym, um, doesn't have bleachers. So you would try and design it so you could build a higher stage and bleachers into the stage um, and use that space, but that's part of the design. Um, and then the intervention in small group spaces is is spread throughout the building. So those are some of the specialty area features. Um, and what I'll say to you is, uh, before I get lost again, um, is that these are, I I didn't want to overwhelm you with the sixty-five pages of 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 the document. But these are the things that are gonna be put into those for your feedback and added in. Um, if you think about, can you go back to that second slide for me, Michelle, please? Uh, third slide.
Let's see if that, let's see, that one or one more?
It didn't move. Oh, keep going, keep going.
What what slide is it? Tell me.
It's just the, it's just the um, the 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 different areas. It's the simplest slide of all of them. That one right there. If you want to process this as you walk away and kind of prep for our second meeting, I'm gonna have more details for you. Um, but the process off of these five areas. So if you say, look, it it's a big priority for you and I threw a lot at you today. I'm gonna send you the PowerPoint. Um, but if you start processing, well, outdoor areas isn't really as important. I'd rather see some really critical indoor spaces. Start to think about those priority priorities in your head. If you build it in, they could always just say no. But if you don't build it in, it's not an option. So you want to build those things in. So if we could say small, two outdoor smaller facility uh, features like courtyards, that's how you want to do it. So think about what's in this presentation and then what's not. And if you can say, what about? Ask me, send me the email. And I'll make sure I highlight those as I go through the larger document and then show you what's there. Um, you know, the comment about sinks, Michelle, washing things, the art room, multiple sinks. If you could put three sinks in an art room, it's even better. All right, there's never enough sink space in an art room. Um, counter space, things like that. So I threw a lot at you. Um, but just to get you started and thinking about how much goes into this document um, and like literally, this is an example of one right here, like it's that's a lot. So I gave you eight slides as opposed to sixty-five pages.
So would you please also send us the sixty-five pages for those of us who like to read? Um, and are there any additional resources? I saw the video. Um and are there any additional resources? I saw the video came from Edutopia, which I've used for other resources. I don't know, are they great for facilities too? Or is that was that just a one-off video?
I have several videos that are shorter that um we're pulling together. And most of them are about the the classroom space like that.
Yep.
But I'll I if I find more, I'll 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 share them with you. Uh videos and the the sixty-five page document's not ready to share because it's still draft, like it's I'm editing.
Could you send us a draft from somebody else? Just to see what they. No, I I don't have a model or anything to and I haven't, I'm not part of the committee, so I haven't, you know, dived into it before, so.
I can definitely do that.
That would be great. Are there any other resources or things that people need? In terms of process, it seems like this is the first of many meetings that we're going to have to have over the next couple of months just to get this hammered out. Um and I think the other thing we want to have some conversation is um this is the place where we want family community feedback. So we have to make sure we have a process for community feedback. I see that Ralph is still with us and we do have time uh for President to speak. If you would like to join us, I'm going to ask you to unmute Ralph if you're interested. Um you may do so and uh speak as part of the meeting, but that's definitely something that we'll, we're going to have to build into this process as well.
For sure.
Hi, Ralph. Thanks for joining us. We do have time for President to speak on our agenda at the end. Is there anything you'd like to say while you're here with us today?
No, I'm just looking over your shoulders just to uh uh get a sense of where this is going. Um my concern is that the um the ed spec matched the curriculum and that we be cautious about the um we'd like versus the we need. Um those are things that uh I am going to be very conscious of as this process moves forward. Um and I'll I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is just our first discussion of it, as you can tell. I think we're still trying to wrap our heads around with uh what what size box we're even talking about, you know, what 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 are things that we could conceivably consider? And um I think there are going to be a lot of questions for a while yet as we begin to think about what this what this could be and ways that we can uh um be creative with with the options in front of us. And certainly, the exciting thing is that there are so many new materials and new options. For example, that soundproofing that you showed us the picture of is really exciting because that used to not be possible. You could not soundproof a room the way I think you probably can now. So uh there'll be a lot of things that we'll have some technical questions about too in greater detail. But um for now, um I think we are ready to adjourn the meeting unless there are additional questions that people have. Tracy?
I just um I had remembered an email back and I looked it up from October that had examples from Farmington and Mansfield. Are those ed specs that we could look at, Phil, as samples?
So I'll probably just send you a couple of hyperlinks just to to send you right to them.
Um. Okay.
Mansfield's is on their website and they have a a few revisions. I've I've looked at Branford's, I have looked at South Windsor's, I've looked at Farmington's. Uh and I've honestly pulled pieces from each. That's why it's it's a hodgepodge because I think there are certain things each one that are better. And it also depends on the project you're doing.
Sure.
Um so I I will share them.
Great, thank you. Um future meeting dates. So we have our regular uh monthly board meeting next week. Will we discuss it all on that agenda, the process for going forward with this?
I was just going to have Brenda's reach out to everybody and try and schedule another meeting. I think this is one of those that if i- it's too much just to talk about anything else, that you just need to do ed specs, so.
I agree, but I'm I'm very concerned that we're doing this at a time when people can't participate.
Oh, well, we can adjust. We can, yeah.
Yeah.
We can do it makes.
This week was crazy because we have so many meetings to try and get in before April break this week and next. I recognize this might be a special a special thing, but um it would be better if we can have this at a time when parents can all participate. They could, hopefully, you're all watching this on video on YouTube afterwards. But uh yeah, in the future, we will also figure out other additional ways for people to give us feedback. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Okay, and a second.
Hi.
All those in favor signify by saying a or raising your hand. It's unanimous and the meeting is so adjourned at six eleven.